Okay, 7 o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. If you can call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Glenda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Steve Jeffries.
Here.
If you can all rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up, make a motion to approve the March 19, 2019 Board Minutes. If I could have a second, please?
One second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassi. Is there any discussion? Call her up, please.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Steve Jeffries.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Glenda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us to special reports, Mr. Hales.
We have two special reports. We have some students here from the high school that'll give us an update on the Appalachian Service Project that they participated in. I believe this is the second year we've worked with that project. I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Malacher, Dr. Malacher.
Full practice.
And she'll give a little bit more information about them.
So, the Appalachian Service Project is actually out of the sales group. And that was a service and leadership project that was started, and it is between Geoga and Lake County. And it's a group of students, and this year we have four of them that participate. And they get together several times throughout the year and work with students from other districts on leadership activities. They also do a community service project back here in our district. But their big project is their trip to Appalachia. And they went to Virginia this year again, where they do some basic construction and remodeling. So this year, we have, we are down one, Mary Shantry went, but Alyssa Weiner went with them. She is a guidance counselor here at the campus. She went with them this year. Mikey Malacher, Kevin McNansky, and Andrew...
Pollard.
Pollard, thank you. I couldn't remember who I said. The three of you guys, why don't you come on up and you guys can tell the board what you did.
All right. Well, everyone, thanks for having us at the meeting tonight. So, we're the project sales group that went to Jonesville this year. So, we're gonna start off tonight by talking about the project that we've been working on here at the Riverside Campus. So, a couple of years ago, a student started the Riverside Care Closet. Now, over the past years, it really, you know, hasn't thrived as much as we'd like to have seen it do on campus, so we decided to take that up as our project this year. And we wanted to kind of expand that a bit. So first, I'll talk about what the care closet really is. So, Riverside Care Closet, that's just a collection of items for students who don't have them for whatever reason. Whether they're hygiene products or basic educational materials, you know, whether they're unable to afford them, or they just don't have access to them, we wanted to make sure there was a space here on campus where they could get access to them, no questions asked. So, those are just some pictures.
Could you explain Mr. Buffard with his head in someone's armpit?
Yes.
I feel like that needs some explanation.
Okay, so, that was Mr. Buffard's Halloween costume this year. And then, he had the fantastic idea of posting that on social media. And as you can see, he's dressed as a Dove deodorant stick. And Dove noticed the tweet, and they sent us multiple cases of hygiene products.
Oh, wow.
And they have made the commitment that whenever we need more, they're readily available, and they'll send them to us. So that was absolutely fantastic. And it was just amazing that from Booth's, you know, little Halloween costume, we got such great support from a massive brand. We have a video. Let's see. How does this work? It's in there, fine. Just press it.
You might have.
Immediately. All right. This is a video that we had made with the help of Ms. McIntyre and Ms. Lucas when they went to present at a conference of some sorts. Okay, so that's some more footage of the actual care closet itself and kind of what we have in there. For those who maybe couldn't hear the video, it was just a reiteration of, you know, we want the closet to be accessible. And we touched on the Dove a little bit. Is it back in the presentation? All right. So, these are just the guiding principles of the care closet. Basically, we want everyone to have access. We want this to be a process that is easily accessible for them with no questions asked. And something we really kind of focused on was we wanted to... Oh, next slide, please. Did that happen? Oh, there we go. Okay, so it might have skipped a slide there, but one thing we really wanted to focus on with the project was kind of de-stigmatizing the closet. You know, just in the way that we would sometimes speak about it, we felt that we were stigmatizing it in a way, you know, speaking about the students who accessed it as less fortunate. That can be a very broad kind of phrase that could paint a somewhat negative image in the minds of people who are hearing that students are using it. So we just wanted to, you know, kind of make everyone realize that this is not a thing just for poor people, or people who, you know, for whatever reason can't get it. It's just whoever needs it, you know, for whatever reason. And that's just the way we want it, you know? We don't want anyone to feel bad going in there and getting their stuff, and we don't want anyone, you know, for whatever reason feeling bad about going and getting there. All right, next slide. Andrew, you wanna take it?
So what impact could this have today? So, as we continue to expand the care closet, we hope to see the students and staff. So we want to have an environment where they feel safe and comfortable to go into the care closet, because right now, it's just kind of been like Kevin was saying, there's like a stigma, and people are afraid to go in there and actually get what they need.
Okay. All right, next slide, please. All right, Mikey, you wanna take this?
How will we sustain this? We will continue our actions in reshaping the care closet through educating our classmates. There's about 50 kids going into the leadership class next year, so we've talked about starting there and seeking out students that might wanna help. In addition, we have a community of outside resources that are eager to continue their support. We met with the Business Advisory Council earlier this year, and some of the business owners had shown some interest in either donating supplies or just offering some advice to help. By doing so, sorry, by doing so, we can keep our project progressing through the coming years at Riverside.
All right, Mary?
This is me.
Yes.
What impact could it have next year? What we hope to see is that it grows and it has more progress, meaning we get more supplies, and then we get more people using it. And that hopefully will become a place that is safe and comfortable for students, which I think it has grown to be that a little bit more, because we are having more kids come in and use it. They kind of know who to go to at this point, and then I think it's being talked about amongst all the students, because I think we've seen new faces. I mean, speaking, we haven't actually seen them, but we know that those people are using it, and more and more are. And we hope that it makes a difference, and that's why it was started in the first place by Baker Brainerd when he was here as a senior. This was his thing, and he wanted us to carry it on. And it has definitely done a lot better since it was first established.
All right, so in five years, you'll see the care closet have more items and being used more efficiently. So, right now, we kind of have really too many supplies that we can't get rid of, you know? The closet, it's a very small space, and people just wanna keep donating, but for as many kids as we have going in there right now, you know, we could still have more kids go in there and be fine, you know? We really just, what we're focusing on right now is getting people comfortable with the care closet, having people get in there and get what they need.
Do they have clothes in there, too?
We do have some limited clothing, like we've got some t-shirts and maybe some jackets, you know? Nice ones are left in the lost and found or donated, but it's just a matter of storage at that point. We can't have, you know, racks of clothing just because the area itself is a little small.
Because it's also used as a small classroom for specialized students as well.
Yeah.
So we share the space right now.
Yeah, it's kind of tucked away in the back of the media center by the reception desk. So it's in that classroom back there. All right. Oh, okay, I guess the link didn't show up. I just had a link to a Google Photos album, because we're gonna talk a bit about our trip down to Jonesville now. We didn't really include much about that in the actual slide, but let's see. Does anyone wanna start off in particular?
Kevin, take it away.
Okay, I'll take it away. So, our trip down to Jonesville, it's way south. It's, you know, right on the border of southern Virginia, so it's quite a drive. We ended up spending three days in total just there in working. We were luckily all part of the same group, so we all got to work together as a school and as a community when we were down there. Our group, along with some other students from other schools in the project sales group, we went to a house, and we focused primarily on the flooring in the living room, you know? Soft spots, anyone steps a little too hard, you might have fallen through. So what we did in the course of three days is we tore up the floor, we replaced some joists in the floor, we put some more support down there, and then we laid all-new flooring, and on top of that, we placed laminate. So, you know, this was us doing the work, all of us, everyone that was there, you know, we were hands-on, using saws, taking measurements and everything. So, it was really, you know, hard work, and it took a bit to learn. You know, I was probably the most familiar with some tools just because I'd taken Wood Tech here before. These guys, you know, they're a different story, but we all got there in the end, and we all went down there and did some fantastic work. So, Mary, why don't you share a little bit about your experience down there?
Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
Well, I went a year before, so this is my second year going. And I'll admit, I didn't really want to go a second time, but I decided that I would go back and do it, because I'd like to get another experience out of it, something different, and I definitely did. The first year I went down, I was with a senior and then another girl in my grade, and we, you know, had to learn on the fly what we were doing, because we'd never done anything before like that. And it was really hard to see the way that other people live in different areas, and how they take care of their things, and just what they have, and kind of comparing it to what we have and how fortunate we are. So that was a really good experience. And then this year was similar, but I definitely had more fun. We connected with more students than I did last year, and we learned a lot more, I feel like, because we laid a floor last year as well, and then put up drywall and painted, so we did a little bit more last year. And then we got to connect with our family this year, which we didn't get to do last year, and that was something that really touched our hearts, because we talked to them and we got to know what they do, and they were really appreciative of us being there. Yeah, it was amazing. And I feel like I got better.
When it came to housing, did you stay with any of the families down there?
No, we stayed in, what, there were like cabins almost, but...
Yeah, the branch of the Appalachian Service Project has a project center there, where they're based. So there was lots of, there was lodging available there, and it was also where they kept all their tools and all their supplies.
So, yeah, we stayed there, and then we'd drive to their home every day and work with them. And we'd work, I don't know, from like 9:00 in the morning until maybe 4:00.
Yeah.
I mean, we had a full day of work, yeah, at least.
You also had almost like an adult facilitator there, too, to make sure that you're putting in joists correctly and flooring.
Uh, yeah, not from ASP. Luckily, luckily, there was a fantastic teacher from, where was Steve from? Was he from...
South.
South. And he'd done lots of service projects himself in the past. So luckily, he was familiar with tools in construction, and he was really...
Remember, his first year was like drywall, yes.
Yeah, they don't, they don't send you out with anyone. If you don't bring someone who knows what they're doing, you get there and you're kind of Googling what to do. There's no, I mean, it's...
YouTube is very helpful.
Get out and figure it out, yep.
Yeah, they really throw you in the deep end with it. And last year, we had somebody who, a woman who just knew how to do this, because she did it in her own house, and then this year, he knew how to do it. And I mean, I don't know, we didn't have anybody.
Yeah.
So how were the materials funded? Did you obviously, it cost money for the joists and the flooring and the subflooring?
I believe all that was, you know, stuff fundraised by the Appalachian Service Project Organization itself. So, you know, this is like a kind of international, you know, service organization. So they're well-funded, and they're the ones who provided all the materials for us to work. And they were responsible for choosing the multiple work sites that we went to, because it wasn't just our group. There were multiple of us who went to different homes with different families, and we all worked on their homes with materials provided by ASP, along with some tools as well.
And was your transportation at your expense, or was it part of the program?
Uh, there was some, didn't they have ASP vans that were...
The ESC has two vans that we take, and then, you know, we have the super sweet 2007 Toyota Camry that we went down.
Yeah. So, yeah, so they, yeah. This one, we drove them down this year, yeah.
Yeah, it's a fantastic bonding experience.
So, I really want you guys to tell the bottom line of this story, is four of you went down in that car, and how many, in addition to the four people that came back, what else came back in that car with you?
We may have had a couple canine, you know, fellows that didn't come back in the car, the small car where we were all shoved into.
So, Mary and Ms. Weiner both brought back a dog that they rescued. In addition to the four people in the Toyota Camry, outpoured two small dogs also.
I love it.
To be fair, between our house that we worked on and the man's daughter who lived down the street, they had 14 dogs, and 12 of them were tied up outside all year round. So, Mary and I, being the constant dog lovers that we are, we couldn't really stand to not do something, so.
It was really a lack of self-control, if anything.
Those who do project last year pet food and pet supplies?
Yeah, I do it again this year.
Okay.
Yep.
I remember that.
Yes.
So part of it is whatever they try to do back here at Riverside, they try to make sustainable. So Mary did the pet drive again this year. The care closet will go on next year, and Mikey will carry that on with the leadership class, so trying to make sure that we get at least one or two juniors to carry it on for the following year, so we just continue to build that, that network of community service.
It was a real eye-opening experience for all of us, I think. Me especially, like, on the subject of those dogs, you know? It wasn't a fact that these are bad people down there, you know, that have 14 dogs and don't bring them into our homes or into their homes like we do. It's just the difference of their lifestyle, you know? That's just, dogs are not part of the family there, they're just property. And really, thinking about how different regions of the United States and around the world, and based on different like socioeconomic factors, you know, just how that can affect things is simple to us, is how we treat our pets. It's really completely life-changing when you get down there and you see it on your own.
How were you four chosen to go?
We were just approached by Ms. McIntyre and Ms. Weiner out of the leadership class that went on this year. So luckily, you know, we're already familiar with Ms. Weiner and Ms. McIntyre, so we were kind of just part of a readily available group that was kind of willing to go. So, I know, we definitely tried to incorporate some different spectrums on this trip. I know we'd approached multiple students who attend Auburn. I attend Auburn Career Center. So we wanted to, you know, kind of reach out of the bubble of just, you know, AP scholars and students, and that's something we're definitely gonna try for next year as well, kind of see if we can get a couple more people to go on the trip, and kind of see if we can get a bit broader base to go on the trip as well.
Great.
Yeah, good.
Well, Kevin talked about how we fixed the floor of the house, but there was so much more that we could have done. And like he said, it was a super eye-opening experience. Their lives are totally different down there, just the community they live in, period, is much different than around here. So I will definitely be going back next year, and I'm hoping, as Kevin said, that more people will be able to go.
Yeah. Andrew, any last minute thoughts?
I mean, I didn't even go on this first time.
All right, any more questions from the board? All right, well, thank you.
Great job, guys.
Great job.
Our second special report is really of representatives from PVA that are going to discuss a little bit about the second phase of our district facility plan.
It's gonna be hard to follow after that. What an inspiring number of students. The bottom will take me there?
It does, it does. The bottom arrow.
This is gonna be fun, because I left my glasses at the office so much.
They're just right there.
Well, I'm distant.
I have these.
Oh, these are so fine.
I'll just stand in between them.
Chick-fil-A contacts.
I haven't had them for decades, they bother my eyes. Okay, so tonight, we'd like to take the opportunity to discuss with the board all the activities that have taken place over the last several months, all the action items and reports that we've conducted over the last few months. So the first being, okay, the first being existing conditions review. What that means is really the assessment validation process. We talked about that in our interview. We had an assessment done of this facility back in 2013, so it's been several years since some things have changed in terms of what OSFC guidelines are and standards. So we wanted to bring that up to current scope and cost. So that's the first thing that we're going to kind of give a high-level overview about. The second is capacity and functionality study, and that's really looking at the size of your spaces, the overall square footage of the school, the individual spaces, and how they respond to your educational programs. Third, we completed educational visioning just a few weeks ago, and that was really an exercise where we wanted to, it was a collaborative process, an all-day session, where we wanted to try and gauge the direction of your curriculum and how that aligns with facilities and delivering the education program. Lastly, master planning, that's where we are now. We have some master plan options. We're looking at a variety of different scenarios, as well as LFIs. An ultimate goal is, within a month, to have a district-wide campus master plan for grades six through 12 at this campus. So, with that being said, I just want to reiterate that within our presentation, we're just kind of giving a high-level summary of all these different studies that we did. However, what Emily is passing out is some full data behind what we're summarizing tonight that you can review at your leisure. We're just gonna take some key takeaways from that and summarize them, and then you can review the full data at your leisure. So we're gonna start with the assessment validation, that's the first of the four key tasks that we talked about. There were several items, first of all, I wanna back up and say, I used to be an assessor for OSCC for 15 years, so I have a lot of experience at knowing what should be in an assessment and what should not. So when we looked at your assessment report and then went toward the facility with administration and the court team, there were some items that jumped out to us that should be in there if you really wanna consider renovating this building. So we're just gonna summarize some of those key highlights, and again, the details, the full scope is within the handouts we just gave. The left picture represents the flooring that's in your wood shop, in your metal shop building. You can see from that picture, it's in a worn-out condition, so it was not in the assessment report to replace that. We added that into the scope and costs. The middle picture represents, and I'm gonna kind of go up here, I'm sorry, the pointer I think doesn't work on the screen, but you see this opening right above that window? That is a unit vent infill air take that's tied into your HVAC system. So the assessment calls for replacement of the HVAC system, which should, that was accurate. But when we pull that out, those unit ventilators, which is that right there, that's a unit ventilator, they're going to be removed, and now you're gonna be left with these voids in the walls. There was nothing in the assessment report to infill, though, so we captured that scope and cost as well. Picture on the right represents, really the caption is what we want you to look at, the wall insulation. There's wall insulation that is needed in order to meet LEED Silver Certification requirements that OFCC mandates. I'm sure you're all familiar with that with your elementary school projects. Whether you renovate or build new, you have to meet LEED Silver Certification. So the majority of this building that we're in tonight does not have the adequate amount of wall insulation to meet those minimum air, minimum energy requirements, so we have to add that in. And that was a significant cost, really, in the overall impact of the validation. Last two slides about the validation. Picture on the left shows your existing auditorium. You can see it's kind of outdated. Original finishes, original chairs, outdated, you know, worn carpet and so forth. The assessment did not capture hardly any costs in renovating that space. If you were truly to renovate this building, you wouldn't most likely leave out the auditorium and renovate every other space. So we captured the costs in there to renovate that space, so you can get at least a snapshot of the cost that it would take to renovate that space. And the picture on the right, again, looking at wood flooring, this is a picture of your stage flooring. We went out, we were advised by the team, we were with the court team and maintenance, that we actually have this black plywood, black painted plywood layer over the existing stage, because the stage flooring is in just court condition. So what this slide depicts, and it is in your handout as well, is a summary, a comparison of what the original 2013 assessment costs were compared to what the costs are now as of today's date after our validation. So the first column represents the 23 checkpoints within the assessment. The blue column represents Harrison Planning Group's 2013 assessment, and I apologize, it says 2018. Jeff Tuckerman of Hanon Construction, who prepared this slide, that's a typo, it should be 2013. It shows what the cost was in 2013 to renovate. So if you look here, our total cost was $41.8 million to renovate this building, which was 64 renovation versus rebuild percentage. And just to refresh everyone's memory, OSFC has a guideline of 66% renovation versus rebuild. So if the building falls below that 66% threshold, they recommend renovation. If it falls above, they recommend replacement. Upon the conclusion of our validation, which is the next column in green, the items that we added mainly, a lot, most of it contributed to the LEED Silver Certification requirements. We are now at $46.1 million renovation cost, and we're now at 71% renovation versus rebuild percentage. And this really puts you in a good position, because now you have the option to either renovate or rebuild, whereas before, you only had the opportunity with OFCC to renovate. And lastly, the third column is really, the yellow is just the delta, the difference between the two, I'm sorry. And the amounts at 7% are really typical of what we see for the time span that's occurred between the two. Any questions? So we'll move on to the second topic and study that we conducted, which was really focusing on size and flexibility of your spaces, overall and individual spaces, safety and security, and looking at how the design affected safety and security standards in today's environment. Thank you, Emily. And I was gonna pass out those studies. And then daylighting, you know, how much daylight was provided in educational spaces or what did not have daylight. But we're gonna focus tonight really... But we're gonna focus tonight, really, in our overview, really about the size and flexibility of the spaces because that was the most predominant takeaway in our study. So overall, our facility has over 263,000 square feet. We devised a chart that kind of dissected and isolated the various areas within the facility, both as educational and programmatic spaces and maybe non-educational spaces. We have high school in the column, junior high, board offices, auditorium, and fieldhouse. Now, the rows. The first row represents how much square feet is in each of these spaces. You can see high school, 136,000 square feet. The next row represents the building capacity based on Ohio School Design Manual standards and methodologies. So you can see, we have a building capacity of 824 students for the high school, 573 for the junior high school. The other spaces are not applicable because they don't co-fund for those. And then finally, the last row shows what we have in terms of existing enrollments in those areas and spaces. So it's clear to see, you know, here at the high school, we have over 1,000 students. But in that space, our capacity is only 824 students. And I guess this is no surprise to you, to you all, knowing. But the big takeaway is that we are overcrowded here at this facility.
So if I could just ask a question. So when the building was built back in... '49 is when it started and what have you. So what, do you have a sense of what the differences were between the building code at that point versus what the recommendations are today?
No, I don't. Because the Ohio School Design Manual did not even come, or the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission did not even come into inception until 1997. So I do not, I cannot answer that. I can try and front the data about that. But I will say that the Ohio School Design Manual Standards and Methodologies are really viewed as a very recommended benchmark in other states such as Wyoming. And I think, what is it, not Arizona, Louisiana and so forth, West Virginia are modeling it off of our states because they seem to be a very good standard.
Thank you.
Okay, so within the reports that Emily just passed out, we looked at a variety... So the first one was just like the building as a whole. But then we went deeper. We dove deeper and looked at individual spaces such as classrooms, science rooms. We looked at media center. We looked at student dining and kitchen, and all the variety of spaces that comprise your school. So you have that in front of you. But I'm just gonna just talk about general classroom space here as our summary. Overall, classroom size is about 750 square feet. You have classrooms that are larger. You have classrooms that are smaller. But your typical classroom average size is about 750, which is undersized compared to the Ohio School Design Manual standard of 900 square feet for a traditional design, which is what you have right now. There's very little flexibility between spaces. They're static due to the masonry bearing construction of the building. A big comment that we got back during our meetings and studies was that the middle school teaming is challenging due to the lack of the classroom square footage as well as the lack of flexibility of the spaces. There are virtually no small group rooms, no remedial instruction or teacher and student collaboration spaces within the building. And they will be difficult to produce due to the masonry bearing design and construction of the building. Plus, it will take away from the actual academic space that you have, which is already lacking. So when we talk about student-centered learning spaces and collaboration spaces, just a graphic for those who don't have an idea about it. Picture on the right shows a very large space. It has the ability to allow students and teachers to break out into small group, student-centered learning activities, simultaneously or come back together as a large group. That's that picture. And then the picture on the left, which shows what our spaces here are, like at Riverside High School, which are very small and non-flexible spaces. So in conclusion of this section, we created a little chart within this presentation to kind of summarize the spaces that we analyzed. It's some, but not all, that are within your report. The first column represents the spaces that we analyzed. The second column recommends, represents what OFCC would recommend the size to be for those students, I mean, for those spaces, based on your current enrollment. The third column represents the existing square footage that you have. And then the last column represents the delta. So you can see, just even by looking at the first two rows, how significant, significantly undersized some of your spaces are, those representing your junior and senior high cafeteria spaces. Are there any questions? I told you this is gonna be like Dyer coming up with their presentation. Okay, Emily?
Yes. One more binder. Sorry, we're not being environmentally friendly this evening. We put together a comprehensive report of the educational visioning session, which took place on April 4th over at the Lake History Center right next door. We had over 45 attendees come together, a lot of great energy. And this is to supplement, as Cheryl started off with, the assessment as well as all of the studies that are being conducted. So we wanted to get feedback. We had a great cross-section of participants in the session, including students, teachers, a few board members, administrations. It was great to get everyone, community members and officials, together in the room to really talk about the future of the district. So we conducted from 8:00 to 2:30, or actually, 7:30 to 2:30, a full-day session, interactive, where we shared some insight, really on phase two, and what we were, a quick overview of what we were going through right now with the master plan. We engaged in one activity that was kind of defining successes and challenges of the current campus. We then shared some presentations of, you know, ideas and spaces that school districts across the country are doing to get a feel for what the district was interested in, as well as students and feedback. And a lot of it was open dialogue and sharing that with the group. So there could be explanation provided as far as what like, you know, what were certain preferences, what were not, what the current spaces include and what they would like to see in the future. And again, a really collaborative process. And I think the dialogue was really great. Energy was really high throughout the day. And then the last activity focused on putting all of this together. So after we talked about kind of what was working and wasn't working, some goals for the spaces in the future, we gave everyone the opportunity to work on a site plan, as we say, become an architect, and put together spaces on what are the adjacencies and relationships of spaces in the existing site? Where would you put the kitchen and student dining? How would middle school be situated with the high school? Would there be any shared spaces? And so we got really wonderful, eight different viewpoints with a lot of different perspectives on those relationships. So a lot of the feedback was collected from this. And on the next slide, it just did a high-level summary. So you have a detailed, comprehensive report of all of that output from the meeting and your reports. But really, you know, one of the things I wanted to share that was really remarkable, I think, for this district was the sense of community and culture that I think every group commented on was so highly evident throughout, that the improvements to the building in working with what you have that has taken place over the last few years was a tremendous success, as well as athletics, and then the safety improvements with the resource officer and those additional features around the building. Some of the challenges, no surprise, I'm sure, some of the traffic, site circulation, congestion areas, as well as insufficient spaces, which, you know, Cheryl reported on as well. ADA accessibility being another challenge. Some of the goals, there's lots of goals for the spaces that were identified. But when we were looking at the site plans, a lot of the common themes that came up were having dedicated entrances and parking for middle school as well as high school. Again, going back to kind of that site circulation and help with that. And then a common theme really was the flexibility of spaces, providing more storage spaces, technology-rich spaces throughout the building to help with curriculum and learning, as well as creating a community connection. We saw that theme a lot of creating kind of a hub area and having the campus serve as that community hub with access to different spaces throughout the building and bringing more people in. So those were a lot of just high-level summary of the themes that came from that day. So we were so appreciative for everyone that gave of their time, have a lot of great input, which then inform our master planning process, which we are currently in the process of. Any questions on educational visioning?
I hope we have a lot of reading.
Yeah, I know, I'm sorry. We have homework.
Okay, wrapping it up. I actually go close, I'm sorry. Okay, so where we are right now, just pebbly back a little bit. OFCC did their annual cost update the first week of April. That's typically when it occurs. So they were on time, which allowed us to run updated master plan scenarios for a new 612 facility, which, let me even backpedal some more. We, you guys know, from personal experience, the budgets are busting across the state. It's not just here. It's everywhere, every architecture firm, construction firm. The OFCC budgets have not been holding the last few years. We anticipated a 10% increase. It did not happen. They increased it by 4.5% this year, which was disappointing. We've had feedback from OFCC planners, yours included, Bill Premisal, that said, "You need to tell your school districts to add more money as an LFI to protect the budget because we don't agree with these costs." We've had many, many conversations in our core team meetings over the last few months about this. And we're saddened that it happened, that it was, the increase was only 4.5%, not 10%. But I want to present to you what the OFCC numbers are based on that 4.5% increase. So master plan one, a new facility, a new 6 through 12 facility, co-funded amount is about $78.3 million. Master plan two would be renovations in additions to the existing Riverside High School at a almost evil number of $6.6 million. Again, just keep in mind, with that plan, you're not changing the layout of your spaces or anything that is strictly renovation of existing systems and conditions with new. So you still would be stuck with the same layout, which was the point of all the studies that we did and presented earlier. So it's something that you, as a district, need to weigh. But, so we have those. We presented those a few weeks ago, weeks ago to our core committee. And what we're working on right now, as we're striving to arise as a campus district, campus master plan for 612, is looking at what we call potential LFI's. I know you know what that term means, locally funded initiatives, things that are outside the OFCC co-funded umbrella. And I won't touch base on all of them, but some key things to take away. We're looking at if, in a new facility, the new 612 facility, you want to duplicate an auditorium because you have that now. We're looking at various cost models for various seating capacities for auditoriums. We talked about that in our last core meeting. Scott Clifford, which I think was at your tours earlier tonight, he's your project manager. Him and I visited your transportation and maintenance facilities to see what your needs and challenges are. And I will say, they are great. There are a lot of needs and challenges there. So we're working together to try and solve those and put a cost to that scope of work to provide better facilities for them. One of the main things that we're doing, which I think is imperative to this whole process that we kind of really talked about in our interview too, is we're testing your program of requirement for grades six through 12 against the square footage that OFCC is giving you. So we're taking your schedules and we're putting them through that POR, program of requirement, and seeing if you have enough square footage that's provided by OFCC to support those programs or not. So we're in the middle of that right now. And last, I want to touch base, you know, on additional costs for market conditions, which is how we started off the slide. We don't agree with the cost increase this year at only 4.5%. OFCC, your planner, doesn't agree. Your district legal counsel has said, "At least put 10%." I know, Belinda, you and I have very, a multitude of conversations about that. So we're looking at putting a little bit of a buffer, a comfort zone, to protect your projects so that we can adequately do what we say to the community that we're gonna do should this project move forward on the bond issue. Are there any questions on...
Sure. So if I understood correctly, 78.3 million is based on what the OFCC provided, you know, their calculation. When you look at the other items that are listed towards the bottom of the slide and you add them in, what do you think, plus the... I can't remember exactly what you said, but the additional amount to ensure that we had enough money to do it right, I guess is how I'd say that. What would you, what do you think the real, the real cost would be?
Well, we haven't gotten there yet because we haven't completed some of these studies. But I, just at trying to answer your question and knowing what we have up here, I wouldn't be surprised if you approach 100 million.
The LFI's are not included, correct, in that number?
Correct. So those top numbers in bold do not include any LFI's. And those are based on the enrollment projections that OFCC has sent to you. So if you look at our potential LFI's, one of those items, and I didn't touch base on that, was potentially, in our core meetings, we discussed, what if we have a larger enrollment than what OFCC is projecting? Because we know we're opening new facilities. We know we have students that are transferred out to like Fairport Harbor and other districts that may want to come back. So that is another item that we're talking about that could have an impact in the overall plan.
The one thing you want to mention is because of where we rank in the, on the OFCC list, we're considered a wealthier district. So even if we get funding from the OFCC, it's nine to 10% of the project. But what the LFI is in simple terms is the OFCC, OFCC will provide funding for certain parts of the project, not things like the auditorium or some of the extras that might be out there. It's 100% funded by a local initiative.
I'm sorry, do you, just... So it seems to me that auditorium is actually pretty important. Do you understand their logic in that, including that as why they classify that as an LFI and not part of the core construction?
Not talking to the camera. I don't understand the logic behind it. It's not considered an educational necessity space by OFCC. Other states do. West Virginia, ironically, does. They support, OFCC supports cafeteriums, which is taking your cafeteria, you have it in your element, you know, on our schools, and putting the stage there and designing it for that. And I think it has to do with their logic of maybe thinking how often those spaces are utilized, you know, maybe, you know, only so often for performances and concerts and so forth compared to the other educational spaces that are used eight periods a day, nine periods a day. That's my takeaway on it. I'm not saying that it's right. Unfortunately, there are some spaces, though, that are co-funded within an auditorium. So the stage would be co-funded. So if we designed this new facility, we would take the stage that's within that POR and we just put it in the auditorium, but it'd be co-funded. Dressing rooms are co-funded. Your control booth are co-funded. So there are some spaces that are co-funded within that performing arts center. However, the biggest piece, which is your seating area, your house, is not.
I appreciate you sharing. I know you're speculating, but I appreciate you sharing. Thank you.
Yes.
One of the things that we talked about, though, in our meetings that I want to bring to the attention of the board is that we talked about how to bring education into some of those locally funded initiative centers of construction. So it was just an interesting conversation. However, however that ends up panning out, it was worthy to note that we did talk about how we can bring learning into those spaces.
Jim?
Yes. The MP1 versus the MP2, is that number based on more square... The MP1 versus the MP2, is that number based on more square footage than the 2? Or is that equal square footage to what we have now?
It's equal square footage. So Master Plan One says building, I can tell you the amount. Thank you. So Master Plan One says building a new 612 facility for 287,000 square feet. And then, that's Master Plan One. And then Master Plan Two says renovations plus in addition to equal 287,000 square feet.
Okay, so it's bigger than what we have present?
Yeah, right, because again, going back to our-
I just wanted to make sure we're comparing apples to apples.
What are the other points you mentioned also is the fact that this is a mason bearing, wall-bearing building.
Right.
So there's not going to be a whole heck of a lot of flexibility in terms of creating those extended learning areas because it's harder to move brick walls than it is to move gypsum board or wood.
Right. Exactly. So if we renovate the building and at those costs that we just talked about, you're still stuck with the same design as we showed here on the first floor plan. And because of the very long linear design of the building, which I did calculate on Google Earth, is one quarter of a mile.
My daughter would agree with me.
And the masonry bearing type of construction would be very difficult to gain spaces such as that picture on the right. So what you have to weigh as a board is do we put $66.6 million into renovating a building that based on our studies really doesn't function very well to your educational program or the direction that you're going in the future compared to the extra cost that it would take to build such spaces? So that's the dilemma that, you know, we're all faced with right now. But it'd be very difficult to replicate these spaces in this building due to the construction and to the current design.
Very good.
Okay. So we're going to be marching forward. Oh, Emily, I'm sorry.
We just wanted to end on our schedule. So just to recap where, recap where we're at right now and what to expect for next steps. So in the draft master planning stage, we just presented the two of the options that we're exploring right now. We're going to continue to formulate those, draft master plan options. And then by our next board meeting, we'll plan to present two or three or however many we land on fully flushed out master plan options to the board for consideration. So that will take us to about May. And again, all of this is leading up to whatever timing the board decides, whether that be November or a different, or a later date. At that time, we're still taking the steps that we need to, to get to that point. So just to kind of recap on where we're at, leading up to a finalization to present to the board.
Very good. Thank you.
Any questions?
I would just like to thank you for the thoroughness of the data that we're getting this time because it's just a far cry from what we have gotten in the past. And so I just appreciate the fact that we have all of this that we can look at.
Well, we appreciate that you appreciate it because we care about what we do and we just, you know, we're not telling you what plan is right for you. We want to present the data to you so that you can make an educated decision about what is best for your district's house.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that.
Do we have special reports?
I'd like to ask you.
All right, that takes us to old business, if anybody's got anything. How about new business? That will take us then to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. The first up is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. The only thing we've got coming up on the 29th of May is the Senior Project Fair.
You should go to that, that is absolutely awesome.
I love it. I've gone every year, I love it. I bring my kids to it. Good event. Are we having it in the fieldhouse again this year?
I believe we are. I'll check with Pete.
What's the date on that?
May 29.
It's grown every year since its inception. I mean, four or five years. I think this year we even have-
They're crowded here. All right, that takes us next to Curriculum and Programming, boosters, Mr. Miley.
Okay, that should be easy. The Curriculum and Programming meeting, we're going to be doing that next month in May. And the booster meeting, there was no booster meeting this past, since our last meeting.
Did I see that that election's coming up soon for the new buildings? I saw that somewhere, right?
Elections.
Yeah, they're starting in like the first-
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, the first of May.
Where are they meeting for those? How are they kind of structuring that?
So they were doing like an overall ask to the district, elementary-wide, because it was the easiest way because of consolidating from six to four. Because in the past, they've kind of just done it school-wide. But so I think they're doing, I think each of them are doing it at their first PTA meeting in May.
A little bit differently. Some of them are having invited both groups to already get together. Some are figuring out how to get nominees before the election, so. What was it with the nominees? Some were using computers and some were, they were kind of-
They're a little all over the place.
Yeah, they're all kind of all over the place. But it's, they're going to work it out. Because the good news is, if you ask me, they're all excited about making this work.
That's great.
Our last meeting, I mean, there was like 50 people here. Normally, I mean, you've been on our PTA meetings, it was normally six, seven people. If they had like four people, so.
That's great.
We have four or five tables.
They've been working with you, Gary, too, to figure out the financial piece of merging these things.
Yeah, yeah, they're on the ball, really, I think.
Good. Cool. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Finance, auto, personnel, strategic plan, Mrs. Grassi?
Okay, so we had a meeting on the 17th of April for finance and personnel. We talked about the status of our elementary schools that are coming offline and the potential for sale or whatever we choose to do with those facilities. We talked about property tax reports and some issues we're having with the property tax reports that are coming out from the county auditor's office when we get our tax collections. We had a conversation about a mileage estimate for phase two. So we talked about this presentation that we just saw from TDA, and we talked about some of the mileage requirements that would be required for a potential bond levy. We talked about, on the personnel side, we talked about preschool interviews and hiring, and that is going to be on our agenda for today. And we talked about the crossroads contract, which is also on our agenda today. But although I know that that was a late addition to this as a board agenda, we've already talked about the crossroads contract, so that should be no questions for anybody right now. And that was it.
I got a couple more.
Well, you can ask them later. All right, we don't have a, we don't have a, do we have a meeting set up? We may, we may already have a finance committee meeting set up for next month. I think we already did set one up because we have to talk about the five-year forecast, right?
I believe you're right. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I don't remember what the date was. I have it on my calendar.
I'll be, I have it written down somewhere.
I know, I have it on my calendar.
Wednesday, May 27.
27, yeah. 78. So. And our board meeting's the 28th, so we should have a five-year, we should have a forecast in the morning, right? Okay. So that's what you'll hear about next month. Yep. That's all I have. Strategic plan, I haven't heard anything, so.
Okay. Buildings and grounds, alumni, Mr. Heck.
So we did have a buildings and grounds meeting in April, I believe it was on the 17th as well. And a lot of the focus of that conversation was about the work that the summer employees are going to be doing as well as talking about trying to investigate different options of providing air conditioning to the enduring current schools for elementary. And so we had some conversation about that. I'm hoping at the May conversation or the May buildings and grounds that we would actually have some of the vendors from the AC advisors, the people we brought in to talk about AC vendors, just so we can ask some more questions and get to true ground on what it would take to make that happen. And I will shortly, Mr. Wainer, will turn the floor over to you to talk about some of the projects you have going on for the summer, because I think that's important. I think we have a good crew this moving forward. But right before this meeting, we did have a chance to tour Parkside, which is over in Concord. And you just, we've had a chance as a board and individually to be there several times through the construction phase. The first time we were there, it was pretty much some concrete or, you know, block walls and you could see the sky and it was wet and it was, you really couldn't quite get the sense of it coming to building. As time's gone on, they put on the second floor and it started to take shape and now it really is, you know, it's really moving along. The next big thing, and you can see the school, you can see the individual classrooms, it's really taking shape. The next big step, I think, that's really going to transform it will be the installation of the windows. That's expected in the second half of May, and that will add, just, it will truly make it real at that point. But, you know, Chris, who's, if you, people who have been watching the meetings online, he's often here because he did take us on the tour. He was excused from tonight's meeting and made him very happy. But, you know, I always ask him what keeps him up at night, and it truly seems like he's over the hump. You know, there's something, there could be glitches that occur, but I think things are moving forward and it's really going to be an excellent facility. And we've had a chance, I did have a chance individually to go to, thank you. It's a Riverview, and it's coming along well. It's kind of, they're not exactly at the same place. What they do is one aspect of a building gets done at one school, they send that same team over to the other school. So they're kind of frogging each other, but progress is being made. And one of the clear examples is the facade at Riverview is much further along than it is at Concord, but they, again, they're flipping teams around to make it all happen. So anyway, I, you know, it's very exciting. It is, the buildings are looking terrific, the layouts, the concepts are really terrific. But at this point, I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Wainer to talk about some of the summer projects that are on the list.
Okay. Right now, after this evening, we'll notify all the summer workers that they have been hired because they are anxious. Every time we go down in the halls, we're getting tackled. But the kids are excited. We're going to be using some of them to clean in Melridge and Buckeye. The high school, Field House, we're going to break that up so we get that taken care of quickly. We're also going to have a moving crew where the students, a lot of the football players and the sturdier ones are going to be on the moving project with the trucks. We're going to have a meeting tomorrow with a few administrators that are going to be available, and we're going to discuss the move as far as trailers, pods, kind of what our thoughts are moving forward so we can finalize those details a little bit. So at 10 o'clock tomorrow, we're hoping to finish that up a little bit. We also are, made a list the other day, and we went through Madison Avenue, had a meeting of the items that we're going to take out of Madison Avenue within that first week. What I did was I told Chris Easley that the 17th is the date that they want me out of there, but by the time we move generators, unit vents, and we have about 15 to 20 miscellaneous type items that we're going to take out, I told him that we would hit it as fast as we could and try to get out and give him some extra time.
And let me just touch on that to make sure people in the room and who might listen in, we are trying to identify different pieces, parts, components of the existing legacy buildings. And if we can reuse them in either the two elementary schools that are enduring or whatever, we are trying to maximize the reuse potential of this whole change.
There's a large generator that we're going to remove that's outside, we're going to take it over to the Field House to try to engage that unit over there to save us some money. 15 or 18 unit vents that we're going to remove out of Madison Avenue and put them in at Lamuth, which is going to be a huge savings because they're roughly $15,000 a unit. And we got a real good price on moving it out and then finalized that up with Gary today. Just a lot of other odds and ends, air conditioning units that were two years old, we're going to take them out, put Buckeye, John R. Williams, a couple of areas that we needed them, teachers' lounge at Buckeye that didn't have anything. So we're going to move those, we have four of them over there that we're going to take out. And then we have a list of some heating vents that when you walk inside the doors, and we're going to pull those all out. So we're going to go in with the maintenance department, hit it hard, get out a pretty good-sized list and then turn it over to Chris. So once that first day of school ends, we're going to move. Boxes are already to all the teachers, they're going to identify with their names and where they're going to go. I've got two great students that are going to organize it, and I don't see anything going wrong.
Piece of cake.
Piece of cake. But if you see me in August, you know, I'm running them up. But it's going to go okay.
It's good.
So I think we're going to meet Jim Kalas and myself, we're going to go Wednesday to Melridge and to Buckeye and meet with Company Newsome Painting to look at some vestibule ideas that maybe a little bit more of what we're looking to do in those two areas. So we're going to tap that on Wednesday. So right now, we're pretty busy.
On that?
It's exciting though.
Mr. Wainer, thanks for giving your head into the report as well. As far as the Alumni Association, unfortunately, they had to change the date of the meeting this month. I was not able to attend, but they are focused on reviewing the Hall of Fame applications and reviewing the bylaws and a few other things. But I, well, hopefully, they won't change the meeting for May and I'll be able to attend.
It looks like they've been at all the closings of the new, the farewell open houses too, right?
That's the true statement. I bought my over-saddle alumni shirt, so, so, all good.
Yeah, they've been really active. One other thing I wanted to mention about the Alumni Association is as we're going through the records down in the basement, we're putting them, making them digital, we found a box, and inside the box was old 16-millimeter and 8-millimeter and slides of classes from the past. I think we have 1964's prom, we have 1959 senior breakfast and graduation, we have a whole list of them, Mr. Carabine has inventoried them. We did contact the Alumni Association, and they're all about converting them into something on a device where we can actually watch them and possibly putting those together and maybe selling copies to alumni or even using them during their special events that they have. So we're excited about it.
Very cool.
And just very quickly, I attended the event at Madison Avenue, and they were, they had clippings from the, early on in the school district, but it's, you know, it's the same stuff, it happened seven years later. I mean, they're talking about bonds and they're talking about getting approvals from the county and, I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a, it is pretty cool and it's, you know, what we're experiencing has been experienced before.
Yep. Awesome. All right, thank you very much. Mr. Jeffries, Policy Committee and Legislative Liaison, please.
It's going to be easy.
Great.
Under policy, there's nothing new to report. Hopefully, we have a meeting soon with the current policies that need to be reviewed. And under legislative, we talked about it last month, the main focus is school security. And Riverside here, we are doing a lot with security, with implementing of the cameras on the newer school buses that we have. We continue to get people running the school buses. We, as a highway patrol, we are currently investigating many of those incidents and we are also-
Can you get by running the school buses?
Once the school bus has their lights out, obviously, you're supposed to stop when red lights are on. So far, there's been a total of 14 incidents that we have received as highway patrol. We have received, out of those 14, we have issued citations out of 13 of them. So we're doing our parts and our bus drivers are making sure that our students are also safe getting on and off the buses. So I can commend them for doing what they're doing out here.
They're high-quality cameras. I saw it for the first time, a couple people ran, they weren't going fast, but they still ran along the side of the bus.
As a police officer-
You can pick it up.
Yeah, as a police officer, it's kind of difficult. Before, it was kind of difficult. Before, it was kind of difficult for us to make the enforcement because you really couldn't see who the violator was. But now with these high, you know, the cameras that we have, they're, they're high digital and, you know, you could see, there's no, there's no question who committed the violation. As of today, actually, I went to one, one subject's house today because he ran the school, he ran the school bus and I was able to issue him a citation for his violation today. He was just running late for work and he decided that he wanted to get to work on time and he ran the bus school up, so.
There are a couple of pieces of legislation out there. One to stiffen the penalties for running the school bus lights, another one to ease the enforcement of allowing the cameras and, you know, whether or not you have, still being able to issue citations. That's the stuff in the legislature.
I would like to say that that is, that was one of our, that was out of a grant that we purchased these.
We're, yeah, we're, they're not going to steal Mr. Plankos Thunder, but he has a good announcement to make to the board during his report.
I'll keep you suspense.
No, boy.
It's a teaser.
That's all I have. All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, gosh.
Mr. Carroll, Superintendent's report.
I just want to share some pictures from our open house. There, you got to point it that way. Haddon's farewell open house occurred on Tuesday, April 23rd. I have to tell you, it was well attended there. We didn't have too many problems, so much with the parking, we were able to do people even mount a grass. But a lot of people showed up, very much like a reunion type atmosphere. At the open house, I had the pleasure of talking to Clyde Sead Haddon, the grandson of the original Clyde Sead Haddon. He stood there posing next to our building's namesake, a very nice man, told me a little bit about the family. Also on the left, some ladies, I believe it was a class of 1987 from Riverside, very enthusiastic group. My understanding, they went out before they came to, to open house. That's just one of the pictures. There were a few others, so this is one I wanted to put up on the board. We also had Leroy on Wednesday, April 24th. Again, well, well attended. It wasn't one of those situations where you could, I can even tell you how many people showed up, it was, it was busy. A lot of the board members were there as well. Took a picture of the outside of Leroy, obviously, that's the new portion that was built in 1993. Mr. Miller on the left and Mrs. Miller on the right, but not related. They wanted me to make sure I said that. Madison's farewell open house, had a little bit of rain, but still a lot of people. It occurred on Thursday, April 25th. We still have Hale Road to do on Wednesday at 6:30. I can imagine that's going to be very busy. Anytime we have an event at Hale Road, the people come out of the woodwork. It's just a great community school. So, this is all Madison, had the opportunity to photograph, photograph five former principals at Madison. That's Eric Kujla on the left, Bob Thomas, Tracy Shachter, the current principal, Melissa Malacher, and Melanie Pearn. And when I saw that picture, I thought my, it kind of reminds me of another one.
I thought we were like the Mount Rushmore on Madison Avenue.
Is Melanie at Riverside, I mean, Menter, right?
She's at Menter, right. You know, what's interesting about this is that, you know, the principals have done a really good job getting the old photos and putting it together. So I don't know if it's a competition or not, but every school has done a great job. The reason why I put this picture up is we had a couple of retired teachers visiting Madison Avenue during the open house and one was Lynn Bedford, who spent a lot of time teaching at Melridge, has since retired. And she was looking at those and she made the mistake of telling me that she was in third grade, she was looking for her picture. So I took a picture of it after she walked away in order to point out, this is Mrs. Bedford's the third grader.
That is so funny.
At Madison Avenue. And she was talking to Mrs. Orient, who was a longtime teacher at Leroy. And she was in fifth grade at Madison.
That's amazing.
So, that's Judy Orient right there. Now if you look, it looks like Judy's, she's experienced, her experience at Madison is a little bit happier maybe than, than Mrs. Bedford. I just wanted to put that up there. It was, like I said, it was like a reunion atmosphere. Everyone really truly enjoyed themselves there. And one other thing I wanted to mention and I'll conclude my report is that we had, gave Chicken Eddie, one of the painful township trustees, reach out to us about engaging us in some kind of partnership with the Haddon property. And I just want to put it out there and make the board aware that trustees are interested in possibly keeping the back end of the Haddon property to keep it as a playground. And I know there's a lot more that goes into the discussion, but I want the board to at least know that they reached out to us and would like us to keep it in mind as we're moving forward with that property. That concludes my report.
Yeah, that was in Mr. Kalas's Friday packet this past weekend. If everyone didn't get a chance to read it, definitely should. There's a lot of good information in there on that.
Okay, I'll have to look that up.
It was there. All right. Mr. Plankos, Professor's report.
Okay, well, let's go back to school safety. As we mentioned with the bus cameras that were installed, we used the Attorney General Safety Grant funds for that. We were able to install the external cameras on 15 buses and that occurred over spring break. If you remember from several meetings ago, I applied for the Workers' Compensation Grant for school safety for additional cameras and we were awarded $35,599 towards the installation of more bus cameras. It's a three to one match, so if that's their portion, then our portion's about $11,000 that we pay. And this is to install camp, full camera systems on 10 buses that don't have any cameras at all. So include the four internal cameras with DVR and then the two external cameras on those.
So with our fleet, how many?
So that would put us at 25 buses, would have the full six camera system with the two outside or inside. We're planning on all the buses we purchase from now on would have that six camera system on it. So we would be purchased five a year for our bus replacement plan. So by the start of next school year, we should have 30 buses, which is about half the fleet would have all full camera systems.
And I believe Riverside, we are the only school district in this Lake County that has the bus cam, the cameras on the buses right now, the outside, so.
And also part of that grant was to get four new two ray radios for transportation that has access to first responders. So that was all included in that grant. Once we receive the funds in the next four to six weeks, then we can move forward with that installation over the summer. Mrs. Grassi, you mentioned earlier about some issues with the county auditor with their settlement reports. I sent a letter to Mr. Galloway because we received our recent tax settlement on April 16th, which is much later than we typically get it. We usually get them by the end of March. The county went through a new system, so now their settlement reports are much different than they were before and they're much less user friendly to read and they do not have like simple things like commas on it. So when you're reading millions of dollars with no commas, it's hard to read. It doesn't break out residential class one from commercial class two, which, you know, hinders my ability to forecast since those have different collection rates and different tax rates. And also there was a $500,000 mistake on there where they reflected our advance on the wrong fund. So if I would have posted it the way that the county auditor's office sent it to me, I would have posted a half million dollars to our general fund that should have been in our permanent improvement fund. And then the final thing was, we had a large delinquency settlement, so we received $859,000 in delinquent taxes. We typically only receive between 400 and 500,000, looking over like the past five or six years. And I reached out to try to get some more information on that and they weren't able to tell me due to the limitations on the new system, they're still learning, so not really sure how to tell me what makes up that number. So I found it to be a little bit alarming. So I sent a letter to them and I also put in there requesting basically 15 days of interest revenue for being much later because on, you know, it was just over $10 million. That's about $10,000 in interest that we lost out on by that delay of the payment. So waiting here back at the county auditor's office to see what they come back with, I'm sure.
That'll be in there.
You know, it is what it is, I guess, at this point, but I figured it was important to express those concerns because I shouldn't, I feel like the county auditor's office should not benefit from their delay in getting our payments to us. I know in talking to some of my colleagues, they had issues making payroll because obviously the property tax settlement, you don't get two a year and that's important to have and around the cash flow issues. Unfortunately, we weren't in that position this year, but if it was last year, the year before, we've been borrowing money to make payroll.
The, the delinquencies, they've done a good job at collecting delinquencies in the past couple of years, so I wouldn't expect our delinquencies to be that large this year. Are they going to get back to us on that?
I'm hoping to, I put a request in that letter as well to see if, hopefully, we can get some more information on that. I was able to get at least a breakout of what was residential, commercial. The problem is we used to never get that breakout in the past on the old system, so I don't know how to really compare, is it a spike in residential, is it a spike in commercial, is it a particular commercial taxpayer that wasn't paying and then finally paid up on their delinquencies? I'm not really sure at this point. So I'm hoping to get more information, hopefully in time to do the five year forecast to create the projections, but we'll see how that, that goes.
Thank you.
Last week, I was at the Ohio Association of School Business Officials Conference, looked at a lot of good learning sessions there, but one part I wanted to point out was the new auditor state, Keith Faber was there. He spoke at one of the sessions and he mentioned that some of his new priorities and now that he's taken off is, is to kind of audit, look more closely at open meetings, making sure that boards of education, other public entities are putting out proper notices and posting agendas and minutes online, making sure they go on the executive session properly. And also looking at, he was looking at changing the law to require all public officials to attend the public records training and not designating a person to go on their behalf. So he thought it was important that everyone goes to the, to those trainings. So those are just some things that, that might be coming down the road. As far as like the Open Meetings Act, I don't think we have anything to really worry about. We have pretty good receivers in place to make sure those notices are out and agendas are posted in board docs and they, I think, are live the day before board meetings, so they're always out there for the public. So I don't see any issues with that. As a former auditor, I don't know how you would audit executive sessions since that's not public. So I don't know how you can really tell, you know, but they, they want to make sure that you stay on topic, which we typically try to do. When we get off topic, we get back on topic as quick as we can. State budget update, it's quite an interesting time because we have two very different proposals out there. You have the proposal, state budget from Dewine's office that included additional funds for wellness and success, for wraparound services and things like that. Based on the projections, for next year, 2020, would be an increase of $184,000 for that. And in the following year, we'd receive $221,000 for those wraparound services. The other proposal is the Cup Patterson proposal, which is a complete recreation of the school funding formula that's based on the cost of educating a typical child in Ohio. It's a formula that breaks out, it looks at what your enrollment is in different grades, how many teachers you should have, class sizes, there's money in there for technology. There's a whole formula of how that spells out. Those projections came out a couple of weeks ago and based on those projections, we received an increase of $552,000 the first year and 100, additional $197,000 the second year. One of the main issues with the Cup Patterson proposal is it's very expensive and there's concerns whether or not the state can really afford the formula the way it is. Most treasurers support the formula because it's actually based on the cost of educating a child, where the current formulas is based on a $6,020 arbitrary number that you reduce by the state's index. So hoping that they can find some type of compromise between the two formulas, but this came out today that the Speaker of the House is talking about tabling it till the next biennial budget. So I really don't know where we go from here. I would suspect that, you know, if it all washes out, we would see not much of an increase next year is kind of what I'm expecting to see, whether it's the current Dewine proposal or the new Cup Patterson proposal or combination of the two or the Cup Patterson proposal funded at a smaller amount. The next two months will be, you know, we'll be watching closely to see how that goes through the legislature and see what happens when the House proposal, the final House proposal is supposed to come out this week and then it'll go over to the Senate and then they'll put together their proposal and in June, they try to reconcile the differences. We have to have a new funding formula in place by June 30th, whether it's the current one, the new one, or some variation in between. And then lastly, I wanted to point out a couple of late additions to the agenda. Mrs. Grassi, you already mentioned that we added the Crossroads Contract. We also added approval for the Juggernaut Mechanical Purchase Order and that was for the moving the unit vents. We want to make sure we get that approved and scheduled so they can get in there right after school lets out. And also one for incape photography, which is a renewal from prior years for prom and high school athletic pictures. I think that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Yes?
Brian Massey, 8196 Rainbow Drive, topic, we really have two issues. One is the current construction costs for the new schools that are being built. Is there any idea of the current projected cost versus what the initial projections were?
Yeah, we've been trending since we started the process, actually, it was probably since the spring of 2017, we were trending about $2 million over budget on the 38 and a half million dollar project. We're now just slightly higher than that, probably at 2.3, 2.4 million. That, that budget includes the cost of demolition of all four schools. We're working on trying to sell some of those. We'll have to go through a certain process to try to sell those buildings and if we can be able to sell those buildings, that will get us much closer within budget and depending on what we sell them for, we'll probably still end up over by a few hundred thousand, but not anything that's.
The original budget was how much again?
The original budget was 38 and a half million.
38 and a half or two, four over. Are we just going to absorb that couple hundred thousand and we have the money to pay for that?
Right. We're planning on using the permanent improvement fund for various expenses.
Well, this presentation that we saw tonight will be available to the public. I want to make sure that I report correct numbers.
We can put it on.
The video, the video will be online and then.
I can get a copy from TDA and I can email it to you.
There, I was going to ask about the new property tax levy that's anticipated for November. Mrs. Grassi, you mentioned that you've talked to the auditor about millage rates. Is there any, do you have any idea of what kind of millage rates that we may be talking about?
We didn't, we have, we don't have a new levy on the ballot in November. I mean, like it's.
It was anticipated though, you said that you had been talking to the auditor, unless I misunderstood what you were saying.
I think we, we talked in our finance committee about what a bond levy for that particular milli, what a millage would look like and there's a lot of different proposals based on.
Well, what I saw in the presentation today is that a brand new building is going to cost anywhere from, what's it, 78.3 to, with all the bells and whistles, about $100 million.
Yeah. We have a, we haven't decided the timing of it at this point, but we have a, a projection, a chart, we have a municipal advisor that works with us that put together a millage chart based on certain costs. We don't know what that final ask will be, but for example, if it's, say if it's 90 million and assuming 37 years, we can adjust the amount of years based on that, but 37 is what we did for phase one. If we did the same thing at 37 years, a $90 million project, about 4.1 mils.
4.1 mil.
If it was 100 million, as, as Cheryl had mentioned, it might be 4.56 mils. If it's less than that, you know, let's say it's 80 million, we're looking at 3.65.
Okay, so, so I was correct in my numbers that it is 78.3 to 100 million and depending on the bells and whistles that we put in there. And then to renovate and the additions for the existing high school, 66.6 million dollars, is that correct?
Yeah, it was 66.6.
Thank you, Vern.
Thank you. Okay, if there isn't anybody else, that'll take us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for a more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. The first up is finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through T. Give her a second.
Second. Second. Second.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffries, do we have any discussion on items, any of the items A through T?
Mrs. Grassi, could you read the donations, please?
I can do that. Yes, we'd like to thank the following for donating. We have a donation from Checo, which is one of our PTO boards, towards the Two Books, One District program for the elementary. We have a donation from Jennifer and Kevin Pentek to Riverdale Baseball. We have donation from Scott and Jenny Cavell to the Riverside Veterans Memorial Fund. We have a donation from the National Honor Society to the Riverside Veterans Memorial Fund, and a donation from Leroy Elementary to the Veterans Memorial Fund. So, we'd like to thank those organizations for donating to the following things that we have in our schools.
Excellent.
Is there any other discussion on any of these items? All right, then can we call the roll?
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel.
We have a motion to approve the items on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through L. Give her a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Do we have any discussion on items A through L?
A through L, under E, Janet House, she's going to be hired at step 10. I thought we had to cut off, our normal procedure was five years max. Did we have a discussion regarding this before?
We did at the Finance and Personnel Committee meeting. She's currently employed with the Lake County ESC, and has been working in the Riverside District for actually 13 years.
It's actually A through K, not A through L. Mr. Placko, can we remove that, put that on its own separate, please?
Oh, L is the approval. It's A through K. Thank you. We did talk about that at the Personnel Committee. And then...
So, the Personnel Committee recommended this?
The Personnel Committee concurred with that decision.
And why would they do that?
So, we should probably be having this discussion in executive session, because Mr. Jeffries already asked to pull it out, so maybe we'll put that after executive session, discuss that.
Because it's personal.
Again, because it's impersonal.
So, we're removing?
So, we're going to remove Janet House from...
From I to E.
From I to E. And we'll put that after executive session for reconsideration, we'll discuss in executive session.
Okay. Do you need to rewrite that?
We'll just make note that the motion to approve all items...
With the exception of...
With the exception of that.
Right, and it's A through K, not L.
Yes, we don't have to, we don't have to make a motion to it on the agenda, do we?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Because you can always ask for things to be removed, vote on separately, as per...
Other than that, is there any other discussion on items A through K, sorry, A through K? L was the agenda approval. A through K, other than removing that item from I to E? All right, if not, can we call the roll, please?
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, just real quickly, this is Justin Toth, who was a very good wrestler, and was here in high school, and was very much part of our success here at Riverside as an assistant coach with wrestling program. And I know, I'm going to say, he's been chomping at the shit to become head coach. Very excited about it, I know he is, I know he's going to do it again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Are you already organizing the rumble?
Actually...
Can't let it die.
Actually, I was the one, two years ago, changed it back to duel, or from the duel style to the 16-team pool tournament, and last year, it was the most teams in school history, 21 teams, and that got ran very smoothly, so just keep doing what I'm doing with it, and we're going to keep chugging out the rumble. 20th year reunion this year, actually, 20 years.
That's great. Good job.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item M. We have a motion to approve Jennifer Harden as an eighth-grade volunteer cheerleading coach.
That's it?
That's right. Okay, beg for more.
Give me a second, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Thank you. If there's no discussion on that, can we call the roll, please?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Obstain. Motion carried.
And the next one we have is item N, seventh and eighth grade supplemental contracts, a motion to approve Jamelle White for seventh and eighth grade check coach at a cost that is determined in the board agenda. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you. If there's no discussion on that one, can we call the roll, please?
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Obstain.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to approve Marco Grassi as a seasonal worker for Summit, this is O, motion to approve Marco Grassi as a seasonal worker for Summit 2019 at the hourly rate agreed upon on the agenda. If I can have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Mr. Miley? Any discussion? Can we call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Nate.
Was that Nate?
It was.
Okay. Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Obstain.
Motion carried. That takes us to curriculum programming, please.
Yeah, where am I here? Too many pages.
There's a lot of pages today.
We do have a lot, but I had a star by my name. No, but I don't even see it, that's a...
Keep going, keep going, keep going. Keep going. There you go.
Curriculum program, so it's still another page. Okay, motion to approve the items listed in curriculum programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, A through E.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll, please.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Yeah, just real quickly, this is Justin Toth, who was a very good wrestler, and was here in high school, and was very much part of our success here at Riverside as an assistant coach with wrestling program. And I know, I'm going to say, he's been chomping at the shit to become head coach. Very excited about it, I know he is, I know he's going to do it again.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Are you already organizing the rumble? Can't let it die.
Actually, I was the one, two years ago, changed it back to duel, or from the duel style to the 16-team pool tournament, and last year, it was the most teams in school history, 21 teams, and that got ran very smoothly, so just keep doing what I'm doing with it, and we're going to keep chugging out the rumble. 20th year reunion this year, actually, 20 years.
That's great. Good job.
Yeah. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to item M. We have a motion to approve Jennifer Harden as an eighth-grade volunteer cheerleading coach.
That's it?
That's right. Okay, beg for more.
Give me a second, please.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Thank you. If there's no discussion on that, can we call the roll, please?
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Glenda Grassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Steve Jeffries?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Obstain.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Motion to approve Marco Grassi as a seasonal worker for Summit, this is O, motion to approve Marco Grassi as a seasonal worker for Summit 2019 at the hourly rate agreed upon on the agenda. If I can have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Mr. Miley? Any discussion? Can we call the roll, please?
Tom Heck?
Nate.
Was that Nate?
It was.
Okay. Steve Jeffries?